This is a journey.
Let me take you on a journey.
There will still be.
A journey.
New sheriff in town and his name is.
Journey.
This thing is bigger than Nino Brown. This is.
A journey.
What is it that moved you?
Welcome back to another episode of The Journey. I'm your host Larry Robinson and today we have someone who has had a myriad of experiences in their life. Today, we're talking with Shelby County Board of Commissioners Chairman, Eddie S. Jones. He also is a works at the city of Memphis in code enforcement as well as he's a father. Um, he's done so many different things. So we going to jump right in. Brother Jones, how are you today, sir?
I am fine Larry and uh, and you?
I'm wonderful, wonderful.
Absolutely.
Um, so we're going to jump right in. So where were your early years spent and what do you remember about that community?
My early years were spent in South Memphis in the neighborhood of Glenview. And uh, I can remember when we, when I first moved to that neighborhood, uh, me and my brothers, we couldn't even go to the store because it was one of those things back during that time. Uh, you the new kid on the block. We don't know nothing about you. And it, it's almost like that scene from the Five Heartbeats where the guy says every night I got to prove my love. Well, every day if we had, if we went to the store, we had to fight. We had to fight.
Okay.
And uh, and it would be a group of them. And I remember telling my brother, I'm getting a little tired of this. So uh, a little thing called reciprocity. If you do what you do to me, you get it back. I said, so they gang up, let's catch them one by one. And that's what we did. And after that point, we were more than welcome in the neighborhood with the other kids, but they got the message, hey, uh, we here to stay. We not going anywhere. So we might as well be friends. And that's uh, what I remember about my neighborhood um, back during that time.
All right. Parents and who made outside of your parents, who made a big impact on your life?
So basically, what parent? Oh, I had, well, my mother and my father. It was a single parent household and it was my mother, six kids. And so she was going to nursing school and I'm the oldest male and my older sister who was the oldest female, we were left in charge to monitor our siblings that were younger than us. And what I remember about that time, we.
Now, who was it that made the biggest impact? Who was, who was that person?
Okay. The, the person that made the biggest impact for me uh, was a gentleman by the name of Jerry Dover. Jerry worked at the community center. He was the director. And he, you know, every so often I'd go up there, play some ball and then I'd go hang out with those same guys that I told you, we had to fight our way into the community, right? And so he pulled me to the side one day and says, why are you hanging with those guys? I've seen you come in this gym. You're better than that. And they're not going to do anything with their lives. And so he took me, put me on his basketball team. That's where I got all those skills from.
Okay, okay, okay.
Playing ball.
But hold on, don't, don't tell it all the story. We going to unpack it in segment two. Um, what decision did you make as a young person that turned out to be a life altering decision in hindsight?
The decision that I made uh, as a young person was to learn about, well, responsibility. Uh, being in charge of the things that you do that have outcomes and consequences. I made an early decision. I did not want to go down that path and coming up in a neighborhood seeing uh, people being shot, people going to jail. That was a, a path that uh, I did not want to uh, be a part of. So that was that issue for me. Uh, and the irony of that is I ended up working in jail. So I didn't go. I, I, I went, but I went to work.
How different are you from the dreams of your childhood? How different of a person are you from the dreams of your childhood?
I don't think I'm, I'm, I'm that much different. Uh, in my childhood days, I wanted to be a fighter pilot. I wanted to go into the armed service and fly jets, be a fighter, fighter pilot. And so the irony where I see no difference in it, even though I didn't become a fighter pilot, I am still out here fighting. So on one hand, I'm still doing what I wanted to do from my early years and that was to fight for others. So, and I'm still doing that today.
When did you know that you were going to be okay? That you were going to be a success in life? Is there a moment that you could point to?
You know, when I think about that and, and a certain moment, and I think in everybody's life, there are two important days. The day you were born and the day you found out why. I found out why, I would say probably in my thirties. Some of us take it a little bit longer. I knew what I wanted to do, but I didn't know that purpose and that why of how I get to what I wanted to do. And I would say somewhere in my thirties is when I realized the why.
All right, all right. One last question. Typically, we all remember the day that we realized we were black. I'd like to know the moment you realized you were black. Describe the moment and the experience.
The day that I realized I was black, uh, I was nine years old. It was the day after Dr. King was assassinated here in Memphis. The city had put out a curfew order. My mom said, look, go to the store before this curfew start and I want you to go and pick up some groceries and bring it back to the house because we may be in here for a while. Well, while I was walking up uh, the street, going up uh, Netherwood, right there at Willette, there was a National Guardsman standing there with his M16, white man. And these were his words to me. And I, I've never forgotten them. Said, little nigger boy, where do you think you're going? And I said, I'm going to the store for my mom to pick up some groceries. And his response was, don't you know that your little black butt ain't supposed to be out here on these streets? So get along and get on back home. I ended up having to go back home to tell my mom uh, that this National Guardsman sent me back home and told me to get off the street. And to this day, I've never forgotten that. And that was the day that I realized that I was black because the curfew hadn't even started yet.
Wow. Listen, as you can see, we have another, another great Memphis icon. We're going to come back with Chairman Eddie S. Jones of Shelby County Board of Commissioners and he's going to unpack a lot of those moments in his life. So don't go anywhere. Stay right here. You're listening or you're viewing The Journey on the Kuzukian Network. We'll be right back.
Jazz, America's own original musical art form. When did it start? Who were and are some of the major players? How do you distinguish what kind of jazz you're listening to? We talk about the great and lesser known artists, songs and tunes, the instruments and the social impact jazz has had on world culture since its beginning at the start of the 20th century.
Riffing on jazz on the Kuzukian Network.
We're back with The Journey on the Kuzukian Network. I'm your host Larry Robinson. And today, as I said, we, as you were listening, we have Eddie S. Jones, uh, Chairman of the Shelby County Board of Commissioners, um, uh, works in the uh, uh, code enforcement area for the city of Memphis as well as father, husband and the like in just a community stalwart. Eddie, let's unpack some of those uh, statements you made in the first segment. And the first thing I'd like to ask you is to tell us about your childhood, but also how you were raised and what was that home life like?
So I was uh, raised in a single parent home. Six, it was six of us. Uh, we were uh, my mom made sure and my grandmother, her mother made sure, okay, y'all going to go to church too. And so develop a uh, Christian aspect of uh, going to church on Sunday, all the revivals and all of that. And so.
And you had six brothers and sisters.
Well, five.
Five, okay.
I make six.
Okay, yeah. Um, father, where was the father in that, in that mix?
Uh, in that mix, uh, my father, my mother uh, had divorced and my mom went back to nursing school. Uh, and just to, when you realize you were black, she went to St. Joseph. At that time, blacks were not allowed to go to nursing school at St. Joseph. She was in the first group that ended up uh, going uh, through that nursing training where she uh, became uh, uh, LPN. And she ended up actually becoming the chairman over the Nurses Association during that period. And so it was at that point that as a black person that I knew that anything was possible because that was unheard of back during uh, that time. And so from my family experience, I uh, learned those responsibilities of uh, being my brother's keeper, having to watch over uh, my siblings while my mom went and uh, went to school. And she went to school nine months. And so during the nine month period, uh, I can remember that we got welfare, that we'd go and pick up those goods and this because she wasn't working.
Right.
But in the summer months, when she worked, we didn't get that. And so my mother utilized the system for what it was intended to do. So while she was working and being paid, we didn't get the welfare. And when she was in school and not working, we received it. And that's how we uh, got along as a family.
Funniest memories of your childhood. Give me a story about something that was really cool.
Man, listen, uh, and I told you about Jerry Dover. I, that the fondest memories of that, because I didn't have a father in the home, what he did, he took me up under his wing. Basically, I became his son. At that time, he had no kids. And uh, growing up as a teenager, uh, playing basketball for him, uh, my first driver's license, he took me to get my driver's license. So you have to understand, Jerry graduated from Melrose, uh, he, he was a golden wildcat. I graduated from Hamilton, you know, wildcat. And it took me to get my driver's license. Now Jerry played in the ABA. That's a professional basketball league. He had this uh, El Dorado. I think it was a seventy-five El Dorado, had a TV in there and sunroof, uh, white wall, gangster white walls, everything. I went to the driver's license place in there to get my driver's license. So when I tell you that was part of the journey of some of those fondest memories and what he meant to me. And on prom night, that was the vehicle I drove on prom night. Uh, and I, that's something that I'll never forget.
We talked about fond memories. What about maybe not so fond memory during the school years?
Uh, probably during the school years, uh, one of the things that the year uh, that we went to the state uh, in basketball, that was the year that I broke my ankle and could not play. And had I played, I think we would have won the state championship that year. That was something that I always say because, and I loved all my teammates and all the guys that played. I grew up, we in the same neighborhood. We all played over at the uh, community center. And then I remember that same team, because I didn't play, I played up at the community center because you know, the season was over and all. We ended up playing that team, the community center team. We beat that team. I think I may have missed two shots that game and scored forty points. So against those same guys. So that, those were some of the fun uh, memories that I, I have back from my childhood days.
Your transition to adulthood, can you remember the day that you really, it made all the sense in the world to you that you were now an adult?
Yes. Let me tell you what that was. So we're going to go back to Jerry Dover again. Jerry took me up to Lamont On College and, and went to the coach because that's where he played ball. He said, Coach, can you get his kid a scholarship? He'd never seen me play. Jerry Johnson never seen me play. That day we, Jerry took me up there, we signed a scholarship. And I was set to go to uh, Lamont On and play basketball. Well, during that summer, I did some, I shouldn't have did, but I don't regret it now, but it changed the trajectory of what I wanted to do. So I got a young lady pregnant. And back during that time, and, and my oldest son, we're close today too. And juvenile court was one of those courts that if, if the mother said, you're your father, uh, that's your child. You, you're going to pay this child support. And so I even went to court and I said, well, the child ain't here yet. It might not be mine. And the judge says, she said it was, you're going to have to pay. And what, because I learned early on about responsibility, I turned down that scholarship and I went to work. And my mom says, no, you go, go there and I'll do, I'll pay it. I said, no, you didn't create that problem. I did. And I'm going to be responsible and do the right thing. And so I ended up going to work uh, for the city of Memphis. I've worked in the old city jail as a detention specialist. Here I am, eighteen years old and I'm working, I worked the midnight shift and there's all kind of people coming in there and I'm like, okay, all right. That changed the trajectory of things to come in my future. Got used to it, accustomed to it, then uh, went on to uh, going over to Chevy State, getting my required hours to apply to become a police officer. I did that. Uh, stayed on the uh, police department for fifteen years. Lot of interesting things happened while I was on the police department and I, I love to tell this story. It's three things. So uh, in my first year, uh, answering a holdup call, I was shot. Uh, yeah. Beautiful little scar right here on my face, shot in the face. I love to tell people, look, as a police officer, I was shot. I've been cut with a knife and been bit by a gold tooth woman. And so uh, the bite from the gold tooth woman hurt worse than the other two. So I got those experience and also uh, with the athleticism that I had, I tried out for the tact, tactical unit. And so I became a member of the tactical unit. Uh, and then I went from there to crime prevention unit. Crime prevention unit, I think set the, well, Jerry Dover set that tone about community stuff early on. But when I got into that particular department, I was dealing with kids and all of that at that point. And that is what I love to do because I was paying it forward to somebody that did it for me. And to help somebody, a young kid from uh, falling into the same traps that an environment can put in front of them and to let them know you have choices.
Quick, quickly, um, what made you decide to run for public office?
So for years, I continued to do that work, left the police department, went into business, did that for a while, but I never stopped being a part of the community. And uh, I was doing all of those things that what we see going on today, food basket, toy giveaways, clothing. I got involved in my children's education. I was always at the school and one of those principals told me, said, oh, you're going to be our next PTA president. Now, back then, you didn't hear men weren't doing that. You, you thought that was something that the women did. I ended up becoming the PTA president at my daughter's elementary school. And then I uh, went from there and became the chairman of the parent assembly for Shelby County schools. That was all two hundred schools. So I was constantly engaging with parents and from there, the PTA council president. And so I was always involved with the schools, the community, the kids. And then uh, from that uh, got engaged with Mount Vernon Church and joined the church, got into the outreach ministries. And that's what I did. And so what made me decide to run for office, I was doing so much community work that people said, man, why don't you run for office? We vote for you. I said, oh, okay. I did that. They did. They voted for me. And it has been a blessing to me. Now, with everything that I've been through in life and what I know and all the organizations that I've been a part of, being an elected official now makes me better at all of those things. Because the one thing that I promised them when I got in office is that, uh, they said, you're going to be like the rest of them. You'll change and we'll never see you again. But I made a promise. I won't change. I'll simply just change the position that I'm in. And that's what I did and that's what I'm doing today. I've never stopped doing that and want because it is true to my heart in helping and serving others. And so I knew I was a servant leader.
All right. Um, regrets, any, any, any big regrets?
I, I don't have any regrets uh, of how my life turned out. I think it turned out in the way that God intended for me to be a blessing to others. And.
Can you tell me about a time that you maybe fell down and had to get back up? That maybe took more out of you than you could ever imagine to get back up?
Absolutely. And you know, and I don't have a problem sharing this. You know, they put all this in the newspaper when they, they, they got it. You know, when I left the uh, police department, uh, you know, after all of those things that happened to me, I ended up uh, you know, using drugs. I used drugs and, and I was let go from there. That was a big fall in my life. That was something that showed me, you know, you can make mistakes, but I can look at all the things that I've done wrong and weigh them against all the things that I've done right. And all the things that I've done right have outweighed the things that I've done wrong. And so you can be out there doing some things uh, that will be wrong, but to this day, uh, some twenty-five, thirty years ago, I don't indulge or engage in any of that. And that was a life learning experience for me. And so uh, those are things that have happened. It's true, but that's not, that didn't determine who I would be. I determined who I would be with the help of the Lord by my side, walking side by side with me every step of the way.
You was out there with Jerry Dover playing at the community center, about to go to Hamilton High School. If you could go back and talk to that dude, that kid today, what would you say to that, that young man that was at Hamilton High School?
If I could go back in time to say to myself, be responsible in everything that you do. And there will be barriers along the road to success. Don't try to dodge them. Deal with them. Make good decisions and keep it moving. See the end of the road and a path to get there, the path to success. And I think if, if you could take that back and keep that in mind, it took me a minute to get there, but I got there. And I'm proud of that. And so everything that you will do in life won't go the way that you expect it to go. And so what you should do is learn from your mistakes so that you don't make them again. And that's no different in history. When you don't know your history and you fail to repeat the same thing without that knowledge. And so uh, that's what I would say to my younger self from uh, today. And uh, you know, some other things that happened along the road that probably not proud of.
Hold on, hold on, hold on real quick though. So that's what you would say to your younger self. There's many, many young men and young boys that are watching you right, are watching or listening to you right now. What would you want to leave them with?
Here's what I would leave uh, them with. Be responsible in everything that you do. The decisions that you make will determine uh, your outcomes. And so, and don't let those decisions determine your outcomes. Because if you make bad choices, then those bad choices could have a greater impact on the outcomes for the rest of your life. And uh, as an example, I would say to you, uh, violence is not good. Love your brother in the same way that you love your neighbor and love yourself. Don't do those things that you will make a decision in a split second that will determine twenty-five twenty-five or thirty years to life of your life. Be better than that, do better than that. When you can put aside your anger and make conscious decisions about your actions, you'll be a better person for it.
And with that, we're gonna leave it at that with, uh, commissioner, chairman of the Shelby County Commission, Eddie S. Jones. The Eddie S. Jones has given us a journey of resilience, um, community support, as well as perseverance. And that's what we're trying to bring anyone that's listening or viewing The Journey. So listen, I'm your host Larry Robinson. We gonna keep bringing these Memphis icons to you. So keep coming back and viewing or listening to The Journey. You have a wonderful day and come back and see us again soon.
The Journey hosted by Larry Robinson. Executive producer, the Delta Boule.